Special study meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commissions are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and conferred by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carl Al Wharton and Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your names for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other device, devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kempin?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shefkey?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Item number two is the approval of the agenda. I have a red-
Resolution to approve is prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Signed in.
Seconded by Mr. Shefkey.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shefkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Agenda number four is public comment. It's for items that are not on the agenda. It's going to ask us to speak to something that is not on the agenda. Matt will move on to number five, the zoning board of appeals report.
There was no zoning board of appeals meeting this month.
Okay, thank you. Going on to number six is the DDA report. Brent?
There was a DDA meeting last Wednesday, and DDA approved the draft refinancing plan, including, and also approved the amendment to the DDA plan which included, which included redistricting of the DDA, basically eliminating, I believe it was five, five prop, five parcels from the downtown development authority.
Any other questions? Matt, how about the planning and zoning report?
Yes. I want to apologize to a business owner in the city. The report that was prepared for 1-800-MINISTORAGE under the category of current use of subject property, subject parcel, excuse me, the report indicated it was vacant, it was formerly United Flooring America, which is not true. United Flooring America is still open for business, and they indicated that they received a number of, based on that information, there was an article in Troy Times that utilized our report as a source, and our report was incorrect. So, the article that went to press had that information in it saying that it was formerly the site of United Flooring America, and apparently they've received some phone calls inquiring as to when they went out of business and whatnot. So, we apologize, what's that? We apologize for any misinformation, misunderstanding. They are open for business, and if anyone is looking for flooring needs, please, please go to United Flooring America at 3806 Rochester Road.
I give them a lot of business. Okay. Anything else?
No. We do officially have an application for MJR Theater.
Maple Theater, great.
Maple, Maple Riverway, so that's, that's good news.
Okay. Okay, the next item number eight is the site condominium development, preliminary site plan review. Proposed Cedar Pines Woods Site Condominium, eight units or lots, east side of Crooks, south of Benjamin, at 6622 Crooks, section four, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district.
Yes, I'll be very important. Good evening. The first item for discussion I have for the planning commission is the proposed Cedar Pines Site Condominium project. It's an eight-unit, single-family detached condo project, and it's located at Crooks Road, just south of Benjamin Drive. Brent, can we forward the site plan? That's fine. As I know, it's, it's an eight-unit or eight-lot Site Condominium project. Seven of the newly created lots we located directly access off the new public road, Kimberly Court, which is accessed off Merrick Drive. The eighth unit is the existing house on Crooks, as it remains in its current state, as well as with the access drive remaining on Crooks Road. Kimberly Court will be located, there will be a five-foot buffer from the newly created Kimberly Court located to the north here, to the adjacent single-family houses that exist on Benjamin Drive themselves. In addition, the actual road itself is going to be located 21 feet from the northern property line. This is a 16-foot right-of-way located adjacent to the, to the proposed new Kimberly Court. In our report, we detailed the layout. We do have some concerns with what is proposed in front of you, and due to, due to layout, the inconsistency with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, as well as the impact upon neighboring properties, we asked that the planning commission consider a few key issues when reviewing the application. The first issue of note is the proposed landscape buffer that the applicant is proposing. Again, it's this five-foot strip that runs along the, the northern property line of the development, southern property line of the adjacent single-family homes. The five feet we find is insufficient for any amount of landscape screening the applicant is proposing. So, as a result, the applicant is proposing to use the city's right-of-way to buffer and screen the road from those adjacent property owners. We note that the ordinance does not allow the use of evergreens in the city right-of-way. In addition, we do not allow applicants to use the city right-of-way as a buffering, to use as a buffer for adjacent properties. That being said, the applicant has noted that they, they think they can submit, or they, they think that they can fit this, the required buffering and screening within that five-foot strip. We don't have a plan that shows that, and we do find that, we think that five feet is not going to be sufficient to have sufficient landscaping screen in that, in that location. The second issue is the proximity of the road to the adjacent single-family homes. We do note that due to noise, emissions, light, privacy impacts, that those roads to the north will be impacted. We also find that putting the road so close to the properties would have a negative impact and would be detrimental to the protection of single-family homes. One of the, the key statements in the zoning ordinance, very upfront in section, in Article one, in, in 1.03B and C, is the protection of single-family existing single-family properties, and that's a very strong standard in the zoning ordinance, and really what drives the zoning ordinance legally. There is an expectation when one buys a house, there's an expectation that there might be development behind you, but this expectation is a reasonable expectation of what might reasonably be built behind your house. When the property owners on Benjamin Drive purchased their home, there was potentially an expectation that, that homes would be built behind their house. But these, this, the reasonable expectation would, that these would be the backyards adjacent to their backyards of homes, not necessarily a road. They could not have anticipated a road being located behind them. And so, we find that in, in reality, due to the location of the road, there is an unreasonable expectation or unreasonable burden placed upon those four lots in perpetuity to carry the weight of those seven lots that are being developed off of that new Kimberly Court. I'll go back a second. We also note that due to property maintenance code requirements of the, of the city, this area of Lot 7, this is adjacent to Lot 7, the right-of-way as well as the five-foot buffer, is a 21, 21 feet in length total, for this total length is, is required to be maintained by Lot 7. While this might not be an issue in the near future, in the long term, there's a potential for this to come in and become a burden on Lot 7, and so there's some issues that the city might have to come in and start enforcing property maintenance requirements. We do note that the total area for this length is approximately 11,000 square feet of additional property that Lot 7 will have to maintain moving forward. The last issue is Lot 6, as shown by the applicant, is unbuildable. The applicant shows this as a side yard, when in reality, this is a rear yard, so the, the actual building line is moved forward, which makes Lot 6 unbuildable as, as the plan is currently submitted. The applicant did submit us a revised site layout plan, received it yesterday, we did not have time to review it to, in regards to its compliance with the ordinance, but they did show the correct setback for Lot 6 in relation, moving forward. So, that lot would be, would presumably be buildable on the, on the revised plan, but again, we did not have time to review it prior to tonight's meeting. We do note this is a difficult site to develop moving forward, and as such, it will, it does require some really creative thinking to develop this with, with minimal or no impacts on adjacent properties. It's, it'd be very difficult to develop in the traditional layout as proposed by the applicant, and so we do ask that the applicant do consider alternative site option layouts. And the two options that we throw, we threw out for the developer to consider is the, is the cluster option as well as the open space preservation option. And the basic premise behind both these options are design flexibility and zoning standards, relaxation in terms of setbacks, in order to provide a, a creative solution and, and develop difficult sites such as this. In addition, what the cluster and open space preservation would allow would be the, the common open space that results of those, of those development layouts could be used as buffers for the, both the northern and southern adjacent properties. You could, you could lay out the house in such a way that the open space could be adjacent to those properties. The applicant is asked to consider that moving forward as an alternate to what's being shown. I'll lead up the applicant to address that moving forward. The other option for the applicant to consider is simply a removal of lots. The applicant has shown an eight-lot subdivision. If the applicant were to remove lots, the potential to build a private road would be, would not be required, and they could simply have a few lots coming off Merrick, as well as one or two lots coming off of Crooks. Again, that's an alternative for the applicant to consider. We do think that there is a way to sensibly develop this property that would not unreasonably impact adjacent property owners, but also alleviate and allow for an economic return for the property owner and the applicant. That being said, we do find that it has to be done in a creative manner, on which the applicant currently has not proposed to the planning commission for tonight's meeting. So, based on the aforementioned issues, we do find that the project submitted is not consistent nor compatible with adjacent properties, and it's not consistent with the intent and spirit of the zoning ordinance in the protection of single-family residential properties. We do recommend that the planning commission give direction to the applicant to consider a resubmital that does consider some of these site alterations and redesign of the site as proposed. Thanks.
Any questions, Mr. Rush Schultz?
First, I want to bring up the fact that I was, I think I'm one of two people that might have been on the planning commission when Cedar Pines Estates initially came to us, and we pointed out the fact that there was going to be a problem with that very long piece of property to the south, and it was going to require a single-loaded street. And the developer of Cedar Pines Estates said, oh, well, that's not going to be a problem. That's going to be fine because that's down the road. Personally, I'm, I'm more than happy to hear what the developer has to say, but I'm ready to postpone this until they come back with something that meets the ordinance and the requirements of the ordinance. So, that's all I have to say.
Any other questions, Mr. Carl Al? Is the applicant here? If I could go sign in and speak into my microphone, please.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Michael. I represent the applicant. Trowbridge Homes. Available for questions.
Mr. Shefkey?
I'm really concerned about that five-foot for the screening down there at the one end. On my street, there was maybe four feet between the sidewalk. Not that any screening had to go in there in the street, but they put trees in there. And there was just tremendous sidewalk damage after, you know, 15 years, so, and trees don't really act as much of a screen. It almost takes evergreens. I'm not sure how you, you can meet any kind of requirements for screening. Does that five-foot wall, you're going to need something probably more than-
We were unaware that we could not put evergreen trees in the public road right-of-way, so we had proposed a, as you can see, a staggered row, double row of, of 15-foot-high spruces that we had tree spayed in. We met with the property owners that, that would accept the meeting with us and, and showed them what we were planning on doing, and I think some of them are here and some of them are not here tonight, and I think the ones that weren't, aren't here would indicate that they, they found that that was acceptable. Had we known that we could not place our evergreen screen trees in the right-of-way, we wouldn't have proposed what we did. So, I also don't, I, I'm not certain, I didn't see in the planner's comments anywhere that there's a sidewalk required on that side of the road, since there are no houses at front on that side of the road. We just show a sidewalk on the lot side of the road in front of all the lot frontages. So, I'm not, I, I, since there weren't any comments about that, I would assume that that's not a requirement, and wouldn't, it wasn't our intention. Our intention was really fill that space with, with, you know, reasonably mature evergreen trees that would be effective screening in the beginning versus a smaller tree, which wouldn't be effective for some years down the road. We also have, in response to the, the Lot 6 concern, we've prepared an alternate plan where we've changed the, the division between Lot 6 and 7 that allows Lot 6 some more space and applied that 35-foot setback on two sides of the lot, and that is, makes it a feasible buildable lot for us. We were encouraged to submit this as a private road, not a public road, and had we known that we didn't, could not put landscaping in the road right-of-way of the public street, it probably would have changed our app, you know, our, our intention moving forward of what we had proposed. So, I leave that as a, as an option. Am I correct in understanding that evergreen screening is allowed in private road rights-of-way, but not public?
I think, I, I'd have to confirm that. I don't know. I'll stop my head.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sanzika?
I'm just curious, you know, planners have recommended, you're looking at a cluster zoning or open space zoning hip. Did you look at those options? Or-
When we, when we discussed, when we discussed with them in the meetings, we had, the cluster provision was not brought up to us. Is my understanding, as I look at it briefly, it looks like we might have some flexibility in setbacks, because the setbacks are driving some of where the road is placed. I think another thing in laying this out, the vast majority of the mature trees are on the south side of the site. So, you know, if you put the road on the north side, you're bothering people. If you put it on the south side, you're bothering people or somebody that's, it's going to, you know, that it's going to be next to. And if you looked at the existing tree survey that was done and what's there, you find that we're having to take out far fewer mature trees in, on the north side of the site than we are the south side. So, we elected to go along the north side versus the south side in terms of laying the road out. If we have the cluster provision and have reduced rights of, or reduced setbacks, particularly front setback, it would allow us to move the road down considerably from where it is now and still provide us with the access that we would need.
You referenced that you met with homeowners. Can you be a little more specific? Was it not, not just Cedar Pines, but it was also North Bridge?
We, we met with the, the four homeowners that would be affected, Lots 14 through 17. We, we placed in, in their doors a copy of the site plan in a letter asking to contact me, and two of the homeowners did, Lots 14 and 17. And we met with them and discussed our items, and I think Brent has, you know, our, either our emails we had going back and forth or commentary by us. Lot 17 asked that we put three additional evergreen trees to the west from what we've shown on the plan here, which we told them we're willing to do. And then you can see on Lot 14, some of the trees that are actually on their lot going along Merrick is part of the, I'll call it, deal that we negotiated with them when we, when we, when we met with them. The other two houses did not contact us after we placed, you know, our, our, our hand-delivered plan and letter in their, in their door.
And the North Bridge Park residents to the rear, to the south?
Did, did not, did not try to contact, contact them, assumed that the city would, you know, through the normal city channels, they'd get that, and I think we've done a lot of things to help preserve what their issues might be. Mature trees are still there. Their, their rear yards backing up to rear yards of, of the proposed houses.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Take a seat, and we'll hear from any other residents who want to speak. Just state your name and be sure you sign in.
Hello, I'm Dan Pratt. I live at 847 Benjamin Drive, which is Lot number 15. So, I did not respond to the letter. I've had previous issues with the builder since he's building the house on Lot 16, where he has not responded to fixing my sprinkler system or the caving inside of my yard due to the driveway that he cut in last November. So, I chose to not go that route. It wasn't working for that, and I didn't think it would work for this. So, thank you for the chance to comment about how the Cedar Pines proposal violates my property rights, violates the character and stability of my family neighborhood, and violates at least two Troy building codes. As a lifetime builder, I know the purpose of the Cedar Pines proposal is to maximize the number of lots and profit. At the same time, this is maximizing the negative effect on my property and my neighbors' properties. The design it submitted shows no creativity and will cause instability to our subdivision in city. The staff report discusses Cedar Pines' negative impact on neighbors, lack of adequate screening and other issues, so I don't need to repeat those. But I would like to add a few other notes that I saw. According to an appraiser that I spoke with, me and my neighbors are going to lose somewhere between 10 and 50% of the value of our homes, which would be absolutely devastating to all of us, especially the corner lot, who I've spoken with and are absolutely terrified about this. They're going to have a road, if you notice, all the way around their house. And I ask the folks on the commission, would you buy that house if you were in the market? Simple question. This proposal violates my property rights by limiting how I can use the property that I bought and paid for. The proposal violates the master deed and map on file with Oakland County. The changing, by changing the description of the lots in Cedar Pines, it's going to change my lot from a rear yard to a front yard. If we're discussing it or not, that's what it's going to be. I'm going to have a road on both sides of my house. Is this project even viable? The property can easily be split into four lots with minimal improvements. I'm not against improving this property. I'm against doing it in a way where it affects the other properties around it in a negative way. With the route, with the amount of road to be installed, it's going to cost nearly $240,000 for that road. If you divide that by the three additional lots he's picking up, that's approximately $80,000 per lot that he's adding to his development costs. I, I don't see how that's a viable project. In this, in the suburb, in the subdivision configuration, oh, I already talked about the, the three streets. How will this new project maintain 80% screening of the property line? The, the drawing indicates, and he just talked about his concessions with Lot 14 and putting the trees up Merrick, he's not allowed to put any trees for the first 25 feet in either direction, so that you can see around the corner. So, I ask, if he can't do it for the first 25 feet, how will he maintain 80% screening on the rest of the lot? I don't think it's possible, not with trees. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the commission to deny this application. Thank you very much for, for considering. Thank you.
Sign in, sir.
Yeah, I did. Okay.
Thank you. I've already signed in, too. My name is Don Pratt, and I have a home located at 3031 Albany Court in Troy. I'm a lifetime builder, just as, as Dan indicated that he was, a former Troy business owner for over 40 years, former chairman of the Huntington Woods Planning Commission, so I've been one of you, past chairman of the State of Michigan's Construction Code Commission, past chairman of the Michigan Association of Home Builders. I've been an instructor for builders, developers, building officials, and have testified in over 600 construction-related cases as an expert witness on building and developing issues. In the nature of full disclosure, I'm also Dan Pratt's father, and he and I developed the Cedar Pines Estates subdivision together, and I'd love to answer your questions when I have an opportunity. After reviewing the maps and the property description located at the assessor's office, I could not find, not even one, not even one subdivision in the city of Troy, and there is an exception to that, I'll mention that in a minute, that is, has, shows this configuration in this situation. The only exception to that is where lots abut, single-loaded lots, abut a major thoroughfare or a major road. And in those cases, the developer has put in larger lots with berms and trees to screen it against noise and light coming in from the cars that are going up and down the roads to, to make it more private for the residents that are already in existence in these subdivisions. This is clearly not the case for a good development, and furthermore, the developer would have the burden of selling these lots at a reduced price. I have developed literally thousands of lots in southeastern Michigan. This type of subdivision is not warranted. It doesn't make any sense. More importantly, the only hardship is to the existing Troy tax-paying residents. I don't know if this developer lives in the city of Troy, but Dan does, my son does, and I have homes in, in Troy. In addition, the proposed project does not control its own water runoff. It instead utilizes the retention ponds constructed in the Cedar Pines Estates, along with the North Bridge Park subdivision number one site. Adding this additional stormwater could result in flooding, a flooding situation in the Cedar Pine sub. We have not had an opportunity to check this out with engineering department or with our own engineers to determine if this could actually happen. The reason that they're not putting a retention pond on their property is, there's no room. It's very clear. There's no space for it. When we develop projects, we have to make sure that the retention is kept on our sites, and we have done a very good job of that. This project, if allowed to proceed, litigation could be an option, which would be very costly and every, to everyone concerned, and it really is not going to accomplish anything. What will accomplish something is what we've heard the planning, the planners say, that come back with something that's logical, where you're not affecting the property values of the people along Benjamin. This is a wrong situation. It's the wrong place to put a subdivision in your city, and I would hope that you would rule in that favor when it comes time to do that. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the time that you've allowed me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
And I have signed in.
All right. Go ahead. Change your address. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason that they're not putting a retention pond on their property is, there's no room. It's very clear. There's no space for it. When we develop projects, we have to make sure that the retention is kept on our sites, and we have done a very good job of that. This project, if allowed to proceed, litigation could be an option, which would be very costly to everyone concerned, and it really is not going to accomplish anything. What will accomplish something is what we've heard the planners say, that come back with something that's logical, where you're not affecting the property values of the people along Benjamin. This is a wrong situation. It's the wrong place to put a subdivision in your city. And I would hope that you would rule in that favor when it comes time to do that. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the time that you've allowed me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
And I have signed in.
Thank you. I've already signed in. My name is Joel Pumphrey. For almost 20 years, I've lived at 6616 Glendale Court. If I might show you where that is, and we haven't heard from my side of the territory, it's number 14 right here. And I've owned two businesses in Troy. I vote all the time. And I just love the city of Troy. I mention that to everybody. When the initial Cedar Pine subdivision was built, the neighbors all sighed relief because, as most members of the city of Troy like, are green belts between the subdivisions. So we always said, that's such a small area and so many mature trees, it will never get built on. And we laughed that the only way it could be built is a road down next to the backyard of the people of Benjamin. And lo and behold, that's what they've come up with. And to address the gentleman that came from the developer, you might have put notes in the four doors on 14, 15, 16, and 17 on Benjamin. However, number 16, as he probably doesn't know, has a big for sale sign on it, so there is no one there to read this note. We've already addressed the fact that it just shouldn't be. Those five new homes, they themselves will be looking onto a street in the backyards of the people of Benjamin. Their property value will go down, we all know this. My concern on my personal stage is, if I might, this is what is planning on being taken down. It's the buffer between Northbridge Park and Cedar Pines. And it would be really tragic. Now, from my personal side, I don't mind having, you can expect, a house in the backyard. But as you can see, I'm pie-shaped, very narrow front, very large back. I will have three homes, backyards, at my yard. I have three homes, families that are involved in it. And as being a retired person with no children, I'm sorry, I just, you know. And I hate looking out my back window and not seeing one back from somebody's houses, but I'm going to have three to look at. It's ill-conceived. It's done, let's face it, it's done for money. Four houses could be built instead of eight. And that green belt, which we all love between our subdivisions, would stay intact and mature trees won't be taken down. And as I said, I love Troy. I know you're going to do the right thing, and thank you for letting me talk.
I have signed in. My name is Paul Eichbrecht. I own a lot directly abutting the southern border of lot 6, it's 6605 Glendale. I wanted to echo the comments of Joel and Mr. Pratt and provide some additional ones here. We have, of course, been used to, I've lived in this house for 23 years, been used to the green belt there. Just notwithstanding what I heard the applicant say about not tearing down either too many or any, I couldn't quite be sure of the trees on the southern border there, I don't believe that's going to leave much of a buffer back-to-back on those yards. And I understood the comment of the consultant that maybe there's some expectation that you might have builders going in behind your property when you buy it, but not in a subdivision like this, this narrow subdivision congested housing. And I do have some concern with the initial setback requirements or the initial setback proposal for that lot 6. And I haven't seen the re-proposal, but if it's going to setback anymore from one or more of the property lines, it might drive it toward the rear or toward the southern border, and that would not be good for my property. I'm also very concerned about the reduced property values here. As we all know, in Troy, we were all hit, as was the nation, with reduced property values. They're just starting to come back. I would not like to see this drag us down the same path that we were dragged down with the problem with housing values. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Pitts. I've also signed in. I live in the Northbridge Park subdivision. I live on lot 13. This was, my family was the original owner of this lot. We were one of the first, if not the very first purchasers to have a home built in this subdivision. The one thing that I've always, and myself, my family, we've always prided on not having anybody in our backyard. We always knew it was possible, but as Joel said, after the Cedar Pines Estates went in, we all took a sigh of relief because we felt that there was not enough room to put anything else in between. Although that diagram is probably accurate to scale dimension-wise, you can't see how small that property really is. And also, as Joel said, he's going to have three houses in his backyard. I am going to have two right outside my kitchen window. And it doesn't matter if they move the road, then I'm going to have a road in the backside of my house instead of the Cedar Pines Estates. Either case, the row of houses in Cedar Pines or our houses in Northbridge Park are going to have a street in the front and a street in the back. Either way, I can't afford to take that kind of hit on my property value because of that. There are 2,500 square foot homes plus on the Cedar Pines Estates. Is that correct? I have a 3,000 square foot home. I don't know what square footage they're looking at making these condos into, but why you would squeeze something in there like that just for the sake of putting homes in and making money is something to think about. But anyway, thank you. I just wanted to make my point. Thank you.
Excuse me. My name's Bob Solek. My wife Margaret and I live at lot 17 on Benjamin. We live right next to the retention pond, and I have two concerns. One is the way that this is laid out. When we moved in 2009, there were only two homes on Benjamin. We realized and were welcoming the fact that there was development on the north side of Benjamin. We, again, like everyone else, felt that there was just no way that that land south of us could be developed. But I told my wife, if somebody could figure out something, there's money to be made, that's what will happen. The way it's designed right now, we just cannot come to grips with that. And also, the second part of it is that the retention pond, according to the proposal, is supposed to be extended or expanded. And in discussions with Mr. Michaels, he said that there wouldn't have to be any extension or expansion to it. Now, that pond is a very steep slope next to my home. If there's any addition, and there's also finally mature trees that have been, are finally growing up after all the years that we've been there. Just a little history on this retention pond. The city forgot that it owned this pond. It took me a lot of phone calls to the city to remind them that it was there. They came out. It was really a mess. It was all, it was a mosquito-infested swamp. The city came out last year and re-bulgosed, put in new sewers and the like, and re-landscaped or at least sprayed grass on it. It's just finally starting to look like something. There was a, I was told last year that there was $7,000 in a retainer that was supposed to be used toward landscaping, fully landscaping this retention pond. They were supposed to do it last fall. Following up on that, found out that the money all of a sudden was no longer there and that new builder across the street, Mondrian, was going to take care of that. We have not yet seen anything except more digging and pipes laid. So in terms of the quality of life and also just property value, just beauty in the area is being sabotaged. The view from behind my house is gorgeous. It looks like you're up north. It's a shame, there's a lot of flora and fauna there. It really makes for a nice quality of life. I feel that that would be totally decimated when they come through and, as they did across the street, tear everything down, break the dirt, nothing left. And according to the proposal now, if there's only five feet, I don't see how they're going to put 50-foot spruces on that five-foot strip without it hanging over halfway on my property. Thank you very much.
I live on 831 Benjamin Drive. That's the corner lot.
Just said your name, please.
An Elsati. And I have street on two sides of my home. I shudder to think what would happen to my home or home value, including my grandkids who come in, if I'm going to have street on three sides of the home. It's going to be an extremely unsafe situation for children, and I don't think this is what I, when I came into Troy, I thought this was a beautiful neighborhood. Everything looked wonderful. And now if another street comes up right behind my home, I'm going to just have to lock the grandkids in and not allow them to go out. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll bring it back to the table for any other planning commission comment. Mr. Stratt.
Just verifying with Brent, the retention ponds in both Northbridge and Cedar Pines have been deeded to the city. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So if there is additional development, the city has the right to expand or use those detention ponds? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, someone made a comment about the condos going in. This is a site condominium. It is not a traditional condominium. I believe Cedar Pines Estates was also developed under the Site Condominium Act, so it's going to be a development very similar in so far as legalities and, to a degree, appearance as the Cedar Pines. And the other thing I have to say, and it's a very unfortunate situation, but when we own a piece of property and we love the view shed out our windows, but we don't own that view shed, the person that owns that, those trees and that flora and fauna has the right to cut them down and develop the property. That's the way law works in Michigan. So, you know, the only way to be sure you're going to preserve your view is if you own it. And it's an unfortunate situation, but it's the reality of life.
Any other comments from commissioners? Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I, did engineering have an opportunity to review this to ensure that the retention pond is actually sized for this additional development? I can assume that.
They took a cursory review of it. They did not do, it's not required as part of the preliminary to submit any sort of detailed engineering and stormwater, so they haven't done any detailed review.
I don't think this is detailed engineering. This is proof of the site plan. Is it or is it not sized to accommodate that? Otherwise, what are we approving?
Well, they did. It is sized. They had an engineer.
You did?
The other issue, just to note, is that orders require rear yard detention or rear stormwater management, and they have not shown that on their plan. There is some flexibility in terms of where that is located. One of the issues is that they are preserving that large buffer adjacent to the southern property line there. So they'll need to be creative. If this is approved moving forward, they'll need to be creative in how they deal with stormwater for those lots, especially in the rear yard.
I don't think there's a requirement that the rear yard has to be drained if it is actually surface drainage, if in fact it's going to by natural, by its own gravitation. I don't think it's a necessary evil. I don't know that for sure.
It's a requirement of the, it has to be.
So you're going to force them to take out all of those trees in order to put the storm drainage back in there? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. It's not required that stormwater drainage go along the back properly. Historically, historically, that's what happened, is it was very simple just to, you know, put one along here and then one down the other.
Or they put a sanitary liner. Or they put a sanitary.
Correct. But what we've, what's kind of spun off is that people have realized, hey, these are nice trees. Rather than put the, and I'm not an engineer, okay? I only play when I have planning commission meetings. Rather than put the storm here, is you can put it, you can provide like leads that go between the homes and pick it up that way, rather than eradicate all the trees. So, and like you said, there's also bileous whales. There's other ways to do it, and engineering will support greater ways to do that.
Exactly. And I noticed the way that they did it. They went down the street on both sides, and they have both sanitary and the storm both on that side. Of course, they're far enough apart in order to justify that. I'm sure engineering has gone through that. Question that I have, is this a private street?
No.
You know? They put it as a public street?
Public, yes.
And they could do it in a private street, though.
They could do it in a private street, and that's one of the suggestions that we offered to the applicant.
I think you're right. I think that makes sense. And therefore, if that is the case, then the sidewalk is not required on both sides, or they can do whatever they want on that. So it gives them added flexibility. The only concern I have is the, I think the clusters that you're talking about, option. Is that where we will be requiring them to actually come up with two units together? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. A cluster.
What are you saying?
A cluster is a relaxation of some of the setback requirements, so you can put, build, they can still be detached, single-family homes that are just moved a little bit closer together, so that the remaining area is common open space as part of the whole development. And that common open space could be additional buffers for the existing single-family homes surrounding it.
So what I'm hearing you say is that really you're asking them to actually restructure this, so that it allows more common area and perhaps reduce the number of units that he has shown. Is that correct?
No. The applicant shows, the parallel plan that the applicant would submit would show eight units. We don't redesign projects for applicants, but we think that with a cluster development, they can still get eight units. It would just be done in a more sustainable manner than what's proposed.
Because there's a reduction in front and side yard setbacks.
Therefore, increasing the distance between the street and the adjacent north property. Is that what you're going to say?
Correct.
Potentially. Yep. But again, we're not, we're not charged with designing this.
Yeah, I understand that. We're not trying to design it for them, but I hear what you're saying. I don't know what the disadvantages of that would be, but it makes sense, what you're suggesting certainly makes sense.
The perceived disadvantage is that they're not traditional single-family homes where you have a large lawn, excuse me, a large lot and lawn that you own and maintain. It's under common ownership, and so you don't necessarily have the traditional layout that you would see in a subdivision such as this. Some developers perceive that as a disadvantage in the market, and that's not a product that people want to buy in Troy.
Well, that's an option, though. That depends on the documents that is prepared, whether or not the common area incorporates also the grass area, all the common area, or whether it's actually just the area that is common, let's say, to the boulevard area.
There are requirements for both options, that you have to maintain a certain percentage of the development has to be common ownership, and that's 50%, I believe, for one, and 30% for the other, depending on which one you do. And so you take out the road, you take out the building envelopes, you take out, there's going to be some limited common ownership around your actual building footprint.
Sure.
But for the most part, they are held in common ownership.
Okay. My only concern is, is now we're going to be confronted with more and more of these problem sites. So we have to really be a little more flexible, and we have to show, like you said, the creativity. If we can somehow instill or give some direction along those lines, as you are indicating right now, as one of the options, and I think I commend you for that. I think you're doing an excellent job in doing that. So that being said, I think that actually, there's a problem with it, and that's my opinion anyway. I think there's a problem with this site as presented.
Mr. Hudson.
I'm going to be a little more detailed than Mr. Stratt was, and probably a little briefer, too. But the site plan that's laid out, that street, this location, it's just inimicable to that site. Lot 14 having three streets surrounding it, the backyards having a street and the front yards having a street. That road's going to be changed, and it seems to me that that's going to be a small site and it's being overdeveloped, so I can't support it in this proposal. Now, if they come back, and you want me to adjourn this, to come back with maybe a cluster proposal or some other... or some other proposals, I'd be willing to take a look at it, but I can't vote for this one.
Mr. Kret.
Yeah, I... Just to bounce off of what Mr. Hudson said, I can't approve this as laid out today. The biggest... My biggest concerns are the location of the street, how it affects the neighbors to the north. The second thing is the... That lot number seven, gonna be maintaining that berm. I realize a berm is gonna be probably heavily wooded, so they won't have to mow the lawn, but there's still maintenance. There's always gonna be maintenance. That, to me, is a sore spot of that property owner. I don't think that property owner should be given that kind of heavy dose of labor. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, you know, city staff, actually, do we have some guidelines for how deep a berm should be? I know in this... The last one we did on Rochester Road, we called for ten-foot berm. Is there some kind of guidelines? If we're gonna put up spruce trees or pines, they're gonna grow wide. I mean, some of those spruce and pine have a diameter of fifteen, twenty foot.
Just to clarify, this isn't an actual berm.
Okay.
A berm is where you...
Okay. Okay. Then a screening.
A swale that...
Right, alright.
Provides some... So it's more of a buffer or a screen. And when we're dealing with a single-family residential, detached residential next to a single-family detached residential, there's no actual standard. It's more looking at practicality and common sense in terms of what's gonna be able to be maintained and what's gonna be able to flourish moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin.
I agree with a lot of the comments already been brought up. I can't imagine having a house with streets on three sides. That just would baffle me. I wouldn't wanna live on the corner with two of them like that. This whole development looks like it's one big street, you know, and it is so close to those yards. And bringing up, you know, some of the creativity and flexibility options. I know that I've heard that the detention basin that they're talking about sharing is deeded to the city. Is that something that can be adjusted and altered? It seems to me that they may be able to do a little bit more development with a lot shorter road if they can work out some arrangement to the north with that detention basin for an access route as well. That's something that would require flexibility, moving some things around and discussions. But, you know, this laid out isn't something that's in the best interests of the city. And we need to think creatively of what we can do if we're gonna make this whole development work by doing a short little access there and switching the other houses off to the main road. We would make a big improvement. Might have to cut one or two out of there. I just see a lot of issues there. This isn't going forward, it says.
Mr. Schultz.
Just in looking at the detail of the site plan that's up there right now with the quote tree preservation or tree protection area, several of these homeowners, if in fact the developer leaves these trees, and I would bet they probably won't be left, but if they leave the trees, lot number one's gonna cut a whole lot of them down, or they don't have a backyard. I mean, those trees are within five or ten feet of the back of the house. And they are... They're gonna be cutting trees down so that they have someplace to throw a baseball. I can't support this the way it is. However, I still say that in order to develop this, we're gonna end up with a single-loaded street. Because otherwise, they're only gonna get maybe four houses on this piece of property, and that's not highest and best use. So I want the developer to come back with a parallel plan, but I think we're gonna end up with a single-loaded street ultimately, anyway.
Yes, I think that it's overdevelopment. When I first looked at it, it wasn't that objection, but the more you study it, and I would not wanna be those neighbors with the street abutting the rear of their property like that. And there's not enough room to screen it properly. They're just... The screening for those owners along that side, I just don't know how they're gonna pull it off. I think it's gonna end up being an eyesore. The trees, you can, like Mr. Schultz said, they're gonna be pretty much written off. But we... The aesthetics of the overall product is something that we have to take into consideration to protect the surrounding homeowners, and I can't support that the way it's done.
What else?
I just like the acable, everyone else's comments. I just... I'm just surprised that this site plan's got to this point, you know, having to be submitted with the standard single-loaded, the side road, all the homes, the problems with the trees, problems with the abutting roads and the neighbors. It's just... I'm surprised that, you know, that they put that all of the investment and engineering and planning and have a poor supplemental system. So I would hope that in the future, we won't see this type of development proposed to you.
I agree with that, just most of the comments that have been submitted. I sure wouldn't want my backyard to look out onto a new street. It's just a kind of... And I think we gotta obviously keep in mind the most important ordinance that Mr. Charlie also eloquently pointed out. That's the highest... We ought to protect, you know, residential neighborhoods, and this doesn't protect the existing neighbors. So I couldn't vote for this in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Schultz.
May I ask the city attorney a question, please?
Sure.
Ms. Bloom, if the developer comes back, the petitioner comes back, and they are in fact able to meet setbacks and detention and all of those things, do we have any way within our power to prevent this development from going forward?
Well, certainly it does have to comply with all of the ordinances and the impact to the neighboring residential. This is a case where it is a very unique situation. So certainly, we would be very comfortable defending any lawsuit that might be brought by the developer if you were to reject this.
Okay.
Based on the impact of the adjacent?
Exactly, yes. And compliance with our ordinances.
Okay.
And other issues that have been raised and articulated.
The reason, if I may, the reason I asked is that through the years, we've been told if they meet setbacks and street widths and cul-de-sacs and all of those things, we don't have the authority to not approve the development, and that's why I'm asking. If they meet the letter of the law, my understanding is we have to give our stamp of approval.
All of the letter of the law, and there are a number of things that have been raised today that indicate that they have not met all of the letter of the law.
Okay.
Let me just follow up. A property owner is not guaranteed the highest and best use? And that's been proven in case law, too?
Yes, obviously, you know, there are other options that... For development of this property. So he's not being absolutely deprived of the economic benefit of this site.
Any other further discussion on this?
Well, if I may, I think we probably should, as a commission, make a decision instead of just saying it never happened. Either we move its approval, we deny it, or suggest the developer, if he would like to come back at a future date with an alternative plan. Otherwise, if we say no, he's gonna have to start right from the beginning again with a site plan. I would kind of defer to the developer as to what he wishes us to do.
I would recommend that you table it and let me go through the cluster provisions. Come back to something that you could wish for clustered.
I would ask, given that there's some residents here that wanna stay appraised of the situation, is give the applicant a reasonable amount of time to prepare, revise application, and do some investigation. Give us a reasonable amount of time to prepare, review it, and prepare a report, and then... And have an actual date specific this evening, that we can tell everyone who's in attendance so that they know when to attend the next meeting.
And with the understanding that you can't submit a plan the day before the plan commission...
Correct.
...have a thorough review, we'll need to be...
Correct.
...with the deadlines on the application.
So how long do they need? Ninety days?
We have to... We can postpone for a date certain or an action.
Well, we could prepare, the plant prepared turn back in here, revise the application by sometime next week. Well, I do that I'm not in the state on the nineteenth through the twenty-ninth of July, so...
The July special study meeting, which would be the fourth Tuesday in July?
That you said you won't be in the state.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So regular meeting of August?
Regular meeting of August, which would be the second Tuesday in August.
Mr. Schultz.
Is all that this petitioner be postponed to the regular meeting of August to rework this proposal based on input from city planning staff, the planning consultant, and the planning commission?
Most important. Mr. Kevin.
Mr. Kret?
Yes.
Mr. Danzey?
Yes.
Mr. Shevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Dradmanz?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just recognizing a lot of people here, their cell phones turned off, with their calendars on it. The second Tuesday in August is the thirteenth of August.
Thirteenth of August.
Thirteen, seventh of August.
Chairman. Will the residents be also notified of this meeting?
They just were. It's gonna be... It's August thirteenth.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that if you wanna attend the meeting on the thirteenth, folks, call the planning department and verify that it's gonna be on the schedule, because if it doesn't make it to the planning department, time for review, it's not gonna make that meeting, 'cause we're not gonna get something in on August sixth and have it on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Well, I'll be...
Okay? So I would verify that it is in fact on the agenda for the thirteenth of August.
We would need it by... I would need it two weeks in advance, so...
Two weeks in advance.
Like this. On the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Our phone number and email address is online on the planning page of the city website. Don't be shy. Please call or email if you have any questions.
Also on the agenda.
Also on the agenda.
The gear condition is not working.
Next item is the study item.
Four houses receiving a few days.
Yeah.
It's like quite a long...
The next item is a study item, number nine, Big Beaver Killer Plant Garden Development. File number PUD-010. Proposed revisions to the residential portion. Is that you, Brent?
Yes. And this is gonna be a little bit more of a traditional study-type meeting. Jim Robertson, Jim Clark, excuse me, Robertson Brothers and Kerry Gettrick, who's the original applicant for the entire PUD parcel. If you remember, the PUD was approved, what, two thousand ten?
Eight.
Eight?
Nine?
Nine?
Nine or eight, maybe?
Nine?
Eight times looking at Jim.
Eight, yeah, eight. Yeah. And it was, as you know, it was a mixed-use development with commercial on the frontage, including two commercial buildings plus a support of the building on the front. And it was approved for fourteen residential units at the back. The frontage has been built out. I'm gonna go through some pictures here real quick here. They're looking... The residential component is a leg behind, which is kind of part usual with the economy the way it has been. However, things have shaken loose, and residential is now, you know, an actual realistic possibility. And Robertson Brothers wants to take over the residential component and move forward with developing the residential units. It was approved for fourteen units. They provided some sketches of kind of just mildly reconfigured the layout, just...
They added two units.
And what they'd like to do, so they can do that, what I've told them is the way they've reconfigured it, it's just really, really just minor adjustments that really... It's something that we could support. But what they wanna do is look at adding three additional units and bumping it up to seventeen. And I've informed Robertson Brothers that to do so, we have to go back through the process and amend the CDP and the PDP, which we could do concurrently. But they'd have to go through the process with planning commission and city council. So one of the things we wanna do tonight is kind of get a head nod for the planning commission if they're in support of increasing the number of residential units by three, from fourteen to seventeen. Another thing they'd like to do is talk about design. And this was... This application was approved as an integrated development with the retail on the front, integrated with the residential to the north. And you see here... You see here that, you know, you got the retail on the bottom. It's planned cuts off the front, but you see the integration here. We've got the alley, kind of the alley... I don't wanna call it alleyway, but the walkway between the buildings, and it connects, you know, with this common area between the units. And it's integrated, and the approved designs, the architecture for the commercial component was consistent with the architecture for the residential component to the north. Jim's indicated to us that he's a little bit hesitant with going with a kind of a more urban-type design. And we've talked about, you know, something that's gonna be consistent. It's gonna be like, I think we came up with a new term, quasi-urban, which I'm gonna trademark that. I think it's pretty cool, quasi-urban. It's not suburban, it's not urban, it's quasi-urban. So here you see the layout with fourteen. I'm gonna hit a button here. Presto. You see an additional unit here, and two units here, and it gets to seventeen.
Do that again, would you, Brent?
It's magic. So you're fourteen, seventeen, so you see...
Well, you've got different configurations, too, than the original one. You've got some angles in the...
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah, and I'll have Jim... Jim's more the expert on why they did what they did. Essentially, as... And I brought the drawings. There were some funky, that's a planning term, funky angles with some of the units. And conversations with Robertson Brothers, they indicated that they were almost gonna have to, instead of doing one or two designs, then kind of interspersing those throughout the fourteen or seventeen units, it was almost like they had to uniquely build each of the units because of the unique angles.
Well, that was the attractiveness.
It was.
When I...
It added to the uniqueness.
Yeah. And what we've got, instead of having artistic arcs and some fountains and public display that we always talk about, their master plan in our development, we've now got squares and rectangles, and quite frankly, it looks like a rabbit worm to me, this new proposed design with the increase in the units and the way they've got them structured. Maybe I'm jumping ahead, but when I visited that site on Monday, I had no idea. When we did this originally, looking at diagrams, is a little different than walking out onto the property and seeing it develop. I went out there Monday. Front's fine, I had no problem with that, but I was really kind of chagrined at how small I thought this area to be developed into residential was and is. They've got a magnificent, looks like about a sixty-foot white walnut tree in there. But, you know, I think we're going backwards with this proposal, and we're increasing the density on top of it.
Well, let's... I'm not trying to...
No, I didn't mean to say this quickly in this discussion, but that's what I've been thinking of looking at all this.
So let's get through my part portion, and then we'll open it up. We'll have to talk along with Jimmy Carey. If you don't... If it's okay with us, I'll have to turn it off. So this was the design that was approved. Again, it's got... And not architects, obviously, Tom, you and Mr. Tagle, who's not here, are architects, but more urban in design, you got kind of cleaner lines, and you don't... It's more consistent with what was approved. And what I did, this is something that they're kind of looking at, where you see, it is more kind of traditional, something you'd see a couple miles north, where you've got the, you know, the pitch roast, you've got some columns here, and you've got shutters, and you've got, you know, clapboard, and just more kind of traditional what you'd expect to see in Troy.
Brent, can I add one?
Yes.
It looks a lot like the Italian development down at Rochester and Big Beaver, which I think turned out very well.
Yep. Well, and that's what we're here for this evening, is to get input from the planning commission in terms of, is this consistent? Is this integrated? This is kind of what they're talking about doing as well, another example, another possibility, as is this. Something, you know, very kind of traditional, and they're nice. They're definitely nice, but are they consistent with what was approved? Are they complementary and consistent with the retail component? And I went out... The layout of the townhouse layouts are really, really nice. Jim can kind of get into more of the details. And what I did is use my extraordinary photographic skills, and I went out and I took some photographs just to kind of show some colors, some textures, some materials, some, you know... some textures, some materials, some, you know, angles and whatnot, kind of give you a flavor of what's out there for those who aren't able to visit. So the part, the public art that they've got on the walls is really cool. But you see the, you know, stone, you see some colors, some textures, lots of glass.
Outdoor dining.
Outdoor dining area, which is great. See the, some of the lighting details. It's like, it's kind of modern trellis here. It's kind of neat. I'm fixated on the public art apparently, having, looking at my photo.
I noticed that.
Bright colors.
It's cool.
Yeah. Look, it's really, it's fant- it looks fantastic, by the way. It really, really does. So that, that's, that, that, that's kind of summarizing what we're trying to go for. So I guess the question is, there's two questions again. The increase from fourteen to seventeen, what do you, what do you think as a planning commission? And the design of the units. Have they, is what they've proposed, you know, two of the options for planning commission consideration, is it, does it work in, in its location, which is between, you know, a recently completed kind of quasi-urban commercial component and traditional single-family residential to the north? Does it fit properly? And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll give it back to you.
You know, I have to agree with Michael. I, I think that, God, this reminds me of Coolidge and Maple, that development. That's what that reminds me of and, and certainly with the character that we created in the front. And as we, it seems like it's out of character with the center itself. It just doesn't, I mean, it's totally foreign, you know, from what we originally approved. And, you know, I, I totally agree with Mike. I, I, I'm just, I, I think it's just being crammed in as much as we can within a small area. And I went by it as well and I was just shocked as to how small it was too. After the, the structure's up, you go there and you look at it, and this being three-story on top of that tall. And everything on this is all vertical and it's, it's emphasizing verticality. If you took the other photograph, you'd be able to see it. It just, it, to me, you have the other photograph?
Photograph or the other, the drawing?
The drawing.
This one?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, there's another one.
The original one.
Yeah.
That, that's it.
No, I was looking at this one right here, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, that other one, you can see the horizontal, but the one that I have before me in front of the screen here, I don't know if that's the same one or not.
It is.
Because I think, but it looked, it looked really odd, odd, odd shot.
Reminder to the planning commission is they, they were approved for fourteen and the height that they're, what they're talking about is consistent with the height that was approved. So they're not asking for.
I agree, but it's the articulation that creates whether it's height, verticality, or horizontal.
So Mr. Strad, is your, your comments are related to the facade design, the elevator design?
Oh, yeah, in comparison to, it's totally out of character with the front, the structure.
What did we approve before? What does that, what did that look like?
There it is, right there. Unfortunately, it's not rendered, but to me, I, I saw the rendering on it. There was a rendering on it.
Yeah, I've got a hard copy here, but we don't, this is before the electronic age.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz. As one of, I think only two of the planning commissioners that live in condominiums, first of all, I think it's just as important to look at whether the proposed design is something that is not incongruous to the development that has just been built, but is in fact complimentary to the residential property that is adjacent. I don't think it matters whether the architectural change happens at the south edge of this residential development or the south edge of the existing residential development. There's going to be a quantum change because the houses to the north of this development don't look like what we approved years ago. The other thing I have a problem with is we're now going to seventeen units. And again, being a condominium dweller, I guarantee you these seventeen units will have a minimum of thirty-four automobiles. There is no place outside the garages of any of these to park a vehicle and there are only five parking places on this site. Five parking places for seventeen units is not adequate. I guarantee you. I, on the site, there are five parking places. And I guarantee you that in the wintertime, those five parking places are gonna go away because they're gonna be filled with snow. I've lived in a condo for forty years.
The other question for, for planning department staff, Mr. Kren.
Is there, have they met with these, what they added three homes? Have they met the open space requirements for PUD?
There's no specific open space requirements for PUD either. It's unnegotiated.
Okay.
But what they're proposing is, is consistent with what was approved. And just, Mr. Schultz, you indicated we're, we're going to approve the seventeen. They have to go through the process, including.
I'm sorry, if I said going to approve, we're being asked to approve seventeen and there's absolutely no change in parking, but three additional units. And one of my concerns when this development came before us initially was the lack of parking.
Let's get the rest of our questions put to somebody here from the app.
I'm just curious, has this gone through engineering and fire and all the other? I'm just concerned about the runoff and the storage itself. So, and how about the?
It, it went through basically preliminary site plan approval and it was reviewed by all, all departments internally.
The rain garden is still there.
The rain garden is still there.
Okay. Mr. Shevki, real quick then.
Yeah, I think that seventeen is too much for that property. I think you're a lot more flexible to have some more openness. Those buildings are tall and they're hot in the summertime and the parking's a big, there's so many reasons why I think we ought to hold it to the fourteen if possible.
I, I would give my two cents to you. I don't have a problem with the increase to units. I think this is, I read the, the report that they're basing this on a urban professional person who would occupy this. They don't want huge houses. They don't, so. They wanna be close to retail like they have here. This is one of the nicest retail developments I think we've put up. And I think the, you know, the height is fine. I don't have a problem with any of that. I would look, would like to see the fountain put back in. And again, they can remember too, they are protecting this heritage oak, which is the same thing we approved before. It's a huge oak tree and it's gonna be like the focal point for all these units, so. With that, I think we're ready to hear from the developer and have a chance to defend yourself.
Jim Clark, six nine oh five Telegraph wrote, Robertson Brothers, I did sign in. Kerry?
Yeah, and I'm Kerry Gittrey. I'm with the, I'm the develop, original developer.
Do you want me to lead off or?
Oh, sure.
So by way of explanation, as Kerry said, he is the original developer and still owner of the existing residential component. Kerry has a relationship with Paul Robertson and they were talking and we indicated we'd like to get back to Troy and build additional units. We haven't been in the city of Troy since we stopped building on Rochester Road, a very nice mixed-use development. Your PUD number one some years ago, so very successful development. We'd like to come back. We're here tonight because we'd like to hear, obviously, what you have to say about the additional density and what you have to say about the architectural. We chose in the, I'm gonna jump around a little bit. We chose to take our cues for our architectural from the residential to the north as opposed to the retail to the south. We're here to, I guess, listen and see if there isn't something that bridges the gap between what somebody pointed out. Will be a very stark contrast, no matter what you do. It's just a matter of is it a north or a south line? The justification, and I want to use that word carefully, but the rationale in our mind for the additional density was we are reducing the overall net square footage allowed on the site in the original approval from thirteen thousand net square feet to ten thousand net square feet. What we've done is a lot of discussion and a lot of interaction with brokers and focus groups and actual people who wanna live in Troy. And we believe that the product type and the layout of the product and the sizing of the product will uniquely appeal to these young professionals who wanna start out in Troy and can't afford the, the cost of a new single-family home. So this is a product type that was very successful for us before the downturn in Wickham and a number of other locations. We've secured end loan financing, which is one of the big challenges with doing attached residential right now in this market. There is no FHA financing for it and we secured a lender who will go ahead and make thirty-year mortgages to new purchasers and then portfolio those loans till we can send them off to FHA after approval. That's a, it's a key critical reason why you're not seeing a lot of attached housing. We think this is going to hit the market and be very, very attractive because there has not been a lot of, a lot of that type of housing. So just, and I don't wanna read the, well, I probably do wanna read, but. So the approved unit count is being, it's a request for three additional units. We didn't change the existing parking. We maintained the parking that was on site. And I guess, and I, I'm going contrary to what some of you said, we are surrounded by parking. We have parking to the east and parking to the south. We have parking on Kilmer and we have five parking spaces right on site. If there's a party situation, the last thing these people are gonna have to worry about is parking with, with red, with office buildings all around. I think we can get a reciprocal easement from Kerry since the, the owner of both and the retail is well parked. So I think, you know, if we look at it as a blending of parking in the area, maybe we can look at it that way as opposed to parking behind the garages. We didn't put parking behind the garages because we wanted to expand that center courtyard area where the heritage tree is, getting our construction further away, giving it a better chance of survival. So the units are smaller, does provide for more density, but it also provides for more open space. So I wanted to point that out. I, I talked about the gross square footage. The building height is exactly, is the same as what was approved. The other units were substantially larger units and we don't believe from a, from our standpoint, we could successfully build and sell those in that location. They'd have to be in the three hundred thousand dollar range, given the size of them and the cost of the construction. We think that would be a non-starter right now. It is a tight site. We think it's a first-time buyer site. It's not a second move up, which would be more appropriate in a three hundred thousand dollar price range. We did delete some of the sidewalks and I wanted to point that out to the south of these buildings. We think that there are sidewalks going in from all the streets and there's sidewalks in the center courtyard. I'd like to have the ability to do some planting if, if we're successful in this site plan, south of those buildings. So there is, that sidewalk that would've run south of all those buildings was deleted in a number of areas. We were able to increase the setbacks in several, in one case, simply because of the, the smaller size of the buildings. The long facade you see would not be seen out on Kilmer. We did break those, you know, we broke that so you'd have more of a townhouse look out on Kilmer with a green space going through. You will have the maximum number of units with the five facing a courtyard across from somebody, but that would be internal to the project. We did preserve the rain garden. We did delete the fountain and we pointed that out. And then we would, I, I guess, I've taken seven tries at elevations, which I can show you and I'm not sure you wanna see them because it's, I'm not real proud of the fact that I've driven, drawn seven different types. But, you know, it's, it's hard to, hard to sort of go with what Kerry's done, which is a wonderful urban, very urban center and what we think is a very residential market. And we're, we're scared to do a flat roof, three thousand square foot unit on that tight a site. We think there's a market. It just is not at the three hundred thousand dollar range. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kerry.
Well, my name's Kerry Gittrey and I'm happy to be here.
You have to speak in the microphone.
My name's Kerry Gittrey and I'm happy to be here and we're very proud of, and very lucky to have been able to deliver what we did in the front portion. The music stopped in our industry for a couple of years there and quite frankly, it got a little scary. But we are very pleased with the product we, we've delivered and the caliber of tenants. And thank you for the comments on the artwork. That is my stepbrother and he's a little different. He came out from California to paint those in my garage. And, but that, we are super sensitive to the quality of projects and the aesthetics and also the viability. And when we originally had the PUD plans designed with the residential, I'll admit, we were not really that, when experts in that part of the project. And we were relying on our architects. And our focus is on retail. And so now come to find, and the market's changed quite a bit. We've, in court, we've engaged partnership with Robertson Brothers, who is the expert. And we're smart enough to know that we need to rely on experts and people that know how to see this portion of the development from start to finish. And we certainly do not wanna screw up what we've done so far. And at the same time, we do not wanna have the property remain vacant. And lending criteria are very difficult for a variety of reasons. And we're in no hurry to make a mistake back there. And some of you may remember, we looked at perhaps a hotel and some other concepts after realizing that the residential market had taken, slowed down considerably. So we're, we're looking for some answers and we're, we're hoping to rely on some experts. And we've got the best in the industry helping us. And we need, we need your help through the study session to figure out how to make this, this work. We do have a big fountain in the front there. And I'm, I'm learning that fountains, in, in the retail, there'll be, in the courtyard, we call it the center court. Where we have the art, we'll have outdoor dining and a rather large fountain that will be completed along with this development. But we did maintain that, that tree, that tree back there, which quite a few of the construction people want to take that down. But, yeah, we, we left it up and we're very happy that it's there.
I applaud you.
And you'll notice the rear of the building has art too, so we're, we're super sensitive. Any, any questions?
You mentioned, Kerry, that there will be a fountain on, on site?
Well, there is a fountain in the, that was built and there will be a fountain right between the Develas and the Sai Tai. There's a, there's an area, if you walk through there, it, it requires some plumbing and some things, but it's been staged and will be, we'd like to turn that on along with the residential.
Can you get the site plan on? Get the, the old site plan out. Oh, you can't load it up.
Yeah, I could, just not, not by mouse.
Right in here. Right in this area here.
Let me zoom.
There you go.
I'm getting there just a third.
Yeah, gotcha.
While you're doing it, I also wanted to compliment you on what you did with those walls. You really worked with those neighbors that I do. Those are first-class walls back there, like most folks have. You're really happy.
We hope so. Yeah, here, here's the center court area here. This has all been in place and outdoor dining and some fencing. And everybody's working through their first year, their first season. And we're, we're enhancing the, some lighting and some different issues with the landscaping, planting, the different elements. We're not completely finished, but it's living and breathing now. We've got one space remaining down here on that and we're fairly particular about what we have there. So the, this, yeah, this is the area that we're referring to.
Yeah, look at the contrast between what you've got, what we agreed to, that continuation of that courtyard. Now flip over the, the proposed site plan. You can see the courtyard there versus the what is proposed.
Here's the tree that.
Right there, that's, that's an ugly, that's an ugly, just, we got a beautiful tree there.
But this will be landscaped. This is not, and I'm not.
It has nothing, there's no correlation between what follows through like the original and what we approved. I mean, here you just commented about the beautiful artwork that your brother did.
No, this, this is open space with this tree. There's room for, for, for enhancing the space.
Yeah, I, I see what the room is. a, what, what Mike mentioned before, it's just a, uh, never mind. I'm very emotional about that. I, I just...
I, I am, too.
I, I don't think this is something that you would get approved in Royal Oak, I'll tell you that, where the young people would be, uh, that would be something they would be going for. If that's what we're trying to get, the young people.
Can I ask, can I ask, uh, either Kerry or Jim to address the challenges that you've indicated you've got with, with the approved design of the residential?
Sure. You know, the challenges started with the flat roofs, which I think is a bad residential obligation for a condominium association. It's, it's a very, it's, it's a maintenance issue. The, the size of the units were substantially larger than we think meet the market. And every unit, it, every unit was a, uh, particular design. So, they're all different, based on the angles and the, in the square, the, the L corner unit, which is a challenge in terms of windows. So, it, it had some architectural challenges. Um, and, you know, we can certainly work on the, um, creativity of the courtyards and the open space. We, we created more open space, so I think we have the ability to, um, we, we're not, um, we don't feel that, that product type matches the market. So, we're not interested in building that. We, we are interested in hearing the planning commission's, um, you know, site plan recommendations on how to make it more creative. We're, we're matching Kilmer with exactly what it was with the, the same, you know, we got a square, square east side, and we got a square, you know, west side in terms of our property lines in a square north. Uh, and I think we can work on a more creative, get you a landscape plan for that courtyard that shows more creativity. I, it is blocked out the way it's done. It was done by PEA's engineers.
That explains, yeah.
Oh, I did.
Engineers.
Well, I, we didn't go to a landscape architect to, to do it. So, I, I, I understand the reaction to the straight walks.
I just want to follow up. I'm glad you said what you said. The last, the last paragraph or so is important to me, to put creativity back into that courtyard. Um, you had an exciting layout. You know, you've got the fountains there. You've got, uh, interesting angles. Uh, and then you get this, which looks like, you know, like, I don't know.
Dormitory.
Yeah, dormitory, you know, it's a military establishment. It's, it's not, it's not a homey look. Um, I think what you had before was incredibly exciting. I think you've got to take those elements and put it into this layout and, uh...
And, and I think we can do that. We, the, the distance from front door to front door on the other plan was, um, very minimal. And as you live in it and having your, you know, your front doors, we tried to get more space so we could do more stuff in, in the, in the front or, front courtyard.
We know he's not in our conversations group. Go ahead.
So, I, I just, in spite of the creativity, we, we look to maximize the area in that courtyard, front door to front door. We felt that was important as people moved in and lived there, to not have them on top of, you know, window-to-window relationship. So, um, it's why we had three units and then left a gap and had, you know, three, three more units on Kilmer to try and provide some open space and relief in the facade.
Mr. Schultz. Personally, I don't have a problem with the linear design. Because if you look at Midtown Square and the developments in the south end of Royal Oak, Midtown Square is sold out in a heartbeat. And they are straight rows, tall buildings, exactly what's being proposed here. Um, I personally, I think Unit Seven should be eliminated to give a better view of the specimen tree as you're coming in off Kilmer. And I have some misgivings about no sidewalks along the north side of that driveway, because pedestrians then will be walking in the street, and I think that's a potential danger. But I think if Unit Seven were eliminated and there was substantial, and I do mean substantial, attractive landscaping done along the south sides and north sides of these buildings and down that center courtyard, that this could in fact turn out to be a very, very attractive development. I still have the concern that when these people fill their garages with everything they don't have room for in their houses, I don't know where all the cars are gonna go. Because, take my word for it, the garages are gonna be filled with crap and corruption, and they're not gonna have room to park their cars. We don't use garages in this country anymore. We use them as storage lockers.
Not one.
In this kind of development, you do, because there's no basement. There's no place to store stuff.
Mr. Senti.
I'm just curious, on the original site plan, they showed all the concentric circles. And in the new one, I, and even in existing parking lots, I don't, I would assume those would've been brick pavers or some type of architectural treatments to the, the paving, to revive those concentric designs. And I just don't see that here, and I'm just curious how they get away from that.
There is some different, um, treatments of, of the, of paved surface on the site today, you know, there.
And that's the other thing we need to all keep in mind, any of you that are out there. All the, the, uh, the hard surface, it's already been put in. It's already there. So, I take the opportunity to do, as you were talking about, concentric or paved circles has left, uh, left the barn, so to speak.
Can I, can I add a couple?
Yes.
Um, so, they're, they're proposing three additional, they're approved for fourteen, they're pro, they're, they're proposing three additional. This is negotiated. Doesn't mean we have to approve it. It's a give and take. It's dialogue. So, what I'm hearing is, this looks kind of institutional with the straight lines and looks something like maybe a, a campus or, you know, that thing. So, if we treat this like a blank canvas, forget all the sidewalks. I think we all agree that the tree's probably a good thing. Let's keep the tree. Forget, forget, it's kind of a blank canvas with the exception of a tree. What I'm hearing is the applicant's willing to get some design consideration into this courtyard and come up with something creative that the planning commission is gonna potentially support. So, that's what I've kind of heard. Is that, you're willing to kind of consider some of it?
Absolutely, yes.
So, um...
And how about the additional units? Is the planning commission, uh, I personally don't have a problem with this. I think you need to build to what the market, uh, will sustain. And evidently, you know, you've got a quality builder here with Robertson Brothers. I think you need to use their expertise. And, uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, uh, additional units.
I do.
Because you're going to, to less, less square footage.
I do. It's sites overbuilt. In fact, after we approved it, uh, four or five years ago, I kind of had some second thoughts about it, because I thought maybe it was overbuilt at that time. But now we're adding three more units, and I just, it's too much. Too much.
How big are the, the, the square footage for the proposed units?
Sixteen, fourteen to sixteen hundred square feet. Once again, three thousand square feet less first floor area as proposed with seventeen units than what was approved. So, three thousand of, you know, roughly three less, you know, one, two less of our units than would've been approved under the other plan in terms of net square footage on the first floor, which is why we asked for the additional units, saying we're still coming in under, it's a very tight site. I've been out there. It's a very tight site.
I do also share Mr. Schultz's concern about parking. And I think perhaps you should, maybe perhaps revisit that. Do you have access agreements?
We do.
Already in place?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're over fifty spaces.
Over, over fifty?
Over fifty, and then, you have a hundred on site.
Mr. Reddick, if you would. Yeah, just a one quick question for the petitioner. The amount of square footage on the originally approved, this is just for the homes, the footprint square footage, not the total, Kerry, but the footprint square footage on the original fourteen compared to the proposed seventeen, what's, what are those two numbers?
It's in the package, and I, I took it off the prior application. So, um, and I included that in the package there, sort of. If you look at this...
Okay.
So, if I did it, if I did it correctly, I'm reading from, from their sheet. It says there's thirteen, uh, phase two. It says residential, second line from the bottom, thirteen thousand, seven twenty-seven gross square feet, first floor, fourteen units. Um, and then, same calculation for ours, ten thousand, two hundred units, ten thousand, two hundred square feet.
So, we've got less footprint on your newer proposal, four buildings.
Which is why we came to you for additional units. I wasn't just, I was saying, we're reducing the overall coverage on the site by three thousand, over three thousand square feet. And we're proposing more units. They're just smaller units. They're not as, they're not as, they're not as deep, and they're not as wide.
So, it's overall three thousand less square foot between the fourteen and, I mean, between your seventeen units and the fourteen?
Yeah. With seventeen units, it's still three thousand square feet less net square feet.
Round coverage.
Round coverage, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz.
I understand the fifty-five parking spaces to the east, but the people that live in units eight through eleven, because I'm still talking about Unit Seven not being there, um, the people that live in units eight through eleven aren't gonna walk all the way over to that office building to park their car. That's, and I, I'm just concerned that we're gonna have parking wars here, because I take back what I said earlier. There are actually ten parking places on-site, because there are five around the rain garden and five on the north edge of the property. So, I stand corrected. There are ten, but ten parking places for seventeen units in very large.
And six, there are six secured spaces out on Kilmer, because you've got the curb, the way Kerry has done it on Kilmer, provides two parallel in front of those units and then four parallel in front of the three units, which I think will be utilized by the residents, because it's, you've got that bubble out, so it's a...
By tho, by those residents, but the building of the second, the, the residents of the second building from the west are gonna be out in the middle of no man's land.
Yes.
Did you require that the people use the garage for the cars?
Yes.
In the, in the bylaws?
We will, but he's correct. People do what they do. Once they're in, they...
My sister has a condominium that is way more expensive than these in Northville, and every one of the garages, except hers, is full of stuff, and people park in their driveway. Thankfully, the houses have thirty- and forty-foot driveways. But, uh, they'll fill the garage with stuff. Count on it.
I mean, if, if it's the planning commission's directive, we can add, you know, if, if we eliminate a unit, which I'm not interested in doing, but if we do, we can, you know, parallel park in Unit Seven. I, I think it compromises the residential feel of the neighborhood. I'd like as much green space, because we're, it's a very tight site with a lot of asphalt and a lot of impervious surface between two parking lots. And I'm just, you know, from how, how do you live? I'm not insensitive to what you're saying about the parking, but I, you're gonna pull in there and see parking all to the south and parking to the east, and I'm trying to create, you know, as much green residential in this little enclave. And so, it's, they're conflicting. I, I'm not insensitive to what you're saying, because I can't do twenty feet behind the garage, which is what I'd like to do for the...
But, when you pull in off Kilmer and make a left turn into this development, you're not gonna see, see the parking. You're gonna see garage doors and nothing else.
Yeah, true.
And no place to put your car. I mean, if I'm a guest, if I have five people over for a Christmas party, and my next-door neighbor has five people over for a Christmas party, they're gonna park in some office building next door? I, I just have a case of the chafes with that. That's all.
Are these rental units?
No, for-sale housing.
They will be for-sale?
Only for-sale.
Okay. Are there gonna be bylaws against anyone renting?
No. They will have a provision in the condo docs that say they can rent for six, uh, an owner, we won't restrict an owner. We will only sell to owners. We're not, it's not a rental, but no, they would be a six-month minimum lent, uh, lease term. Would be standard in one of our condo docs.
Mr. Schultz.
Would your condo documents include a percentage of units maximum for rental so that the units can continue to receive FHA certification? Because if you can't get FHA certification on a condo complex, you're never gonna get it financed on a resale.
Um...
And FHA has a maximum number, a maximum percentage of units that are allowed to be rented in order to be FHA certified.
We haven't had any trouble with that. I, I, I'm hesitant to say we would limit it to number. I mean, we're a for-sale developer. We don't, we're not a, an apartment, we've never done an apartment community.
That's not an, that's not an apartment. That is for, for conventional financing on a condominium resale, the unit must have FHA certification, and FHA has a percentage of the complex.
Yes. Not more than ten percent. I think it's not more than twenty percent, ten percent now.
If it exceeds that percentage, they will not certify. And every lender in town is now using FHA certification to finance condominiums. So, if you don't have a, a maximum rental percentage, you're going to handicap your buyers for resale on that property.
We have a provision in our loan docs that obligates us to get FHA approval, or there's a penalty, which, so, I, I mean, we're very motivated. So, you know, they're making the loans based upon the fact that we are going to get this project FHA-approved. Otherwise, we have to pay a, a penalty for not getting it done. So, we have to get it done. I, I can, I'll talk to the attorneys about putting an additional, I mean, I, I've never done it in condo docs, but we could certainly look at it.
Because, because what happens is, when the built, when the development goes up, it's not gonna be rental. But as it ages, more and more units are gonna be rented. And when it hits that magic twenty percent, FHA then says, uh-uh, we won't finance this anymore. And the, the remaining eighty percent of the co-owners can't sell their units, because they can't get financed.
They're, they're in trouble, I know. And we've...
Big trouble. Any other, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, uh, sitting back and looking at it, and, uh, when the original square footage was cut back, uh, according to the, uh, the builder, that, uh, it almost equaled two units. And those could be six, sixteen and seventeen. I'd still like to see Number Seven, like Mr. Schultz, uh, taken out of there. You can either move the other units down, uh, perfectly parallel to them, or, uh, can create a, uh, maybe a, possibly another fountain or some, uh, move them down this way and have a fountain on the other end. So, there's a, well, anyway, you're more flexible with your footprint. And, uh, you're still getting the other two units, which make up for what you lost in the square footage, uh, to make the, the condominium more saleable. So, uh, I kind of, I'd be willing to go along with, uh, two more units. But I think that was a great idea about eliminating Number Seven, because when you're coming in the project, uh, if, if, that can be a knock-down view when you, when you're first coming in, really have something that'll catch the eye besides garage doors. I think, uh, that, that'll go a long way in keeping it occupied.
What, to the point of the condo docs, I mean, we, we will prohibit overnight parking outside of your garage, as a typical in one of our condominium developments, because we don't want errant cars and junk cars. And so, it, it may help address some of the, it's not a real good living thing if you want to store a lot of stuff in your garage. But we do do it as a standard, and then we tick it through the association in tow if necessary, because it, it, we typically don't like a lot of parking spaces. We try and provide for two behind it. This is urban, so there's parking spaces. What we don't want is somebody leaving their car with a flat tire in there for weeks on end. So, we will, as a, as part of our condominium docs, which you'll review prior to this going forward, we would have in there no overnight parking. Now, it becomes a policing action, but that's for the association, and we're vigilant on it when we're in there.
For the protection of every homeowner.
Good question.
Yes.
So, if you've got a storage problem, why can't these units have basements?
Uh, I, I don't, I suppose they could. It's a price point. Really? And it, it becomes with this layout tough to get, you know, you got a garage, and you can't get the densities that are there. If you're putting a basement under, and what do you do with the garage? And so, it's...
Have you, have you got enough directions in terms of...
I checked site plan, yes.
No? I mean, because we could, we could be as simplistic as, uh, as a show of hands, if you want to go there.
Sure.
Do you mind, Mr. Turner?
No, I'm doing a...
How many, how many would theoretically, if, if, if parking and design issues, uh, were, were resolved, how many would be amenable to consider seventeen units on this property? Show of hands. I'm sorry.
I'm troubled by the ambiguity of the word "design." What do you mean by "design"?
Uh, significant improvements to the interior courtyard that presently is very institutional, blah, and non-creative. How many would be open to considering seventeen units? Four? Four hands. How many would be open, with the comment of Mr. Schultz of eliminating Unit Seven, would be open to sixteen units?
Me, too.
One, two, three.
Vote twice.
How many, uh...
Vote often.
So, that, so is that, is that enough?
Yeah.
Vote early, vote often.
Okay, so can we, so let's talk about, real quick, let's talk about, uh...
If, if, if we can just make it clear to the petitioner, he has to have a minimum of five votes to get anything approved. There are nine members, and five of them have to vote in favor, so...
One's not here tonight.
One's absent.
So, the four wasn't enough?
No.
No.
If, if, if we can just make it clear to the petitioner, he has to have a minimum of five votes to get anything approved. There are nine members and five of them have to vote in favor, so...
One's not here tonight.
One's absent today.
So the four wasn't enough?
No, just so you know.
But we're also dealing with images that haven't been generated. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so, and I, you're doing a great job, I'm just trying, it's late, I'm tired, and I, my parents just arrived from Prince Island, Canada this evening, and they're waiting for me at home, so...
Your excuse.
No, this is very, this is very important.
From Prince Island, A?
That's how they spell it, actually. As a starting point, for, for purposes of conversation, what do you think of this? I mean, is this, is this something that we want to transition between the, the built commercial frontage and the residential to the north and, and to...
I do not, I do not think that design is offensive in the least. And, and I'll go back to my comment, that the delineation line is either going to be at the south edge of this property or the north edge of this property. Personally, I think it would be better to be more compatible with residential properties to the north than to the ultra-industrial-looking, beautiful, commercial property to the south.
How many agree with Mr. Schultz?
With an amendment.
I'd like to hear the amendment.
Okay, the, the thing is, yeah, I, I, I don't mind the outside design. I think the materials and some of the detailing looks 1980-ish. I think we could...
Looks like 1980-ish.
I was thinking more 1950-ish.
Okay, well, that's true, yeah, it could go back, it could go back that far. But, but the point is, I think, just a, a little better, if you could afford it. You've got great materials on the retail side. This looks like it was slapped up by builders real fast in the 60s through the 80s.
Can you go to the black and whites?
Yes, please.
That, that is the same elevation, it's just colored poorly. And I can look at, you know, working with materials.
Can you go back to the other one, Brent?
That's what I'm saying, that's fine.
The whitest areas where the, the windows are, I think they're probably bathrooms. If those were bricked all the way to the, the facade, all the way to the fascia, all three floors, I think it would change the appearance of the building and give it a much more substantial and higher-value look than having hardy board or vinyl siding on the second and third floor in those areas.
So maybe the third floor could be siding, but the first two and those elements would be brick, as you're saying.
If that's the best you could do. Brick is more expensive than siding, that's for sure. No, I think this is a nice look, and it looks, I like this much better than the one that's just covered with shutters everywhere. It looks like you can even get larger windows, which, if I was an occupant, I'd want larger windows. Go ahead. Mr. Stratt.
He, he, he didn't have his hand up, but he was just...
Well, I'm just thinking that, to me, this looks like it could be the potential of our low, low-level housing, as was mentioned, whether it's military or otherwise. And that's what scares me more than anything else, are we creating that kind of an environment? I don't think this really complements the existing residents behind. Now, I think that this is not really complementary to that, not at all. I mean, it's a three-story. The design that was originally proposed had walkout levels at the top where it was a flat roof. Certainly had a lot more interesting character to it, and I think it would have been far more attractive. But I understand the econ, the economics of the whole situation. I agree with Mr. Schultz that there isn't enough parking. I was really concerned about the parking on the original, as, you know, with, with the area that's involved. But to me, I can't vote for this. I would never vote for something like this. I think it would destroy the integrity of Troy. That's my position. You saw my nodding, so I aired my frustration.
We're sorry we pursued it. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're going to move on to the next item, unless you have something else.
No, thank you, thank you.
When do you think you might be back to us, or...
I'll talk with Brent, we'll try and get something turned around in a week or two, we'll get back to you.
Very good.
Probably two or three weeks, but we'll get back on, thank you for your...
Thank you. We're happy, we're happy to see you back in the city, by the way. Okay, number, agenda item number 10 is the zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZODA 245, sober living facilities.
We'll, we'll tag team this one, I can start. Obviously, we went before city council, was the draft zoning ordinance text amendment that was, was received by city council. I was going to say well-received. They, they had some issues with, with the proposed language. We, we asked city council to provide the issues and concerns to us. We, we took those issues and concerns, we provided them to the planning commission for consideration. And based on the input from city council, we came up with a, with a memo that kind of laid out some, some proposed revisions. And we bounced those revisions off the planning commission at the last study session. And planning commission agreed with what we, the, the, kind of the concept that we had put together and, and directed staff to prepare a actual zoning ordinance text amendment in ordinance form, which we've provided to you this evening. And Ben, I'm having a hard time getting there, could you...
Yeah, so I'll be more succinct than Brent. The language has not changed from what you reviewed and you recommended that we move forward from the last meeting. The three significant changes from what originally went to council and then came back was that we remove sober living from any of the R1A districts, I'm sorry, any of the R1 districts. We put a maximum resident occupancy at 20, over 20 residents. And then we also increased the minimum lot area per resident from 2,500 to 4,000. So with that being said, we simply took the existing language, put it in ordinance form. And then if planning commission is comfortable with this ordinance language, then we will schedule the public hearing and bring it back for the public hearing review.
What are the rationales for this? Was that it's consistent with large foster care facilities, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the standards are consistent with like uses in the ordinance. And, and, and back to, as we mentioned in a previous application tonight, the intent of the zoning ordinance to protect single-family residential neighborhoods in the planning commission, I'm sorry, city council wanted to make sure that the, that the standards did that, and so we added additional language to that.
But everyone still realizes that seven, you know, or less than seven could still go into any residential neighborhood, am I right? Correct.
That's, that's true, we don't, we don't regulate anything less than, than six or less.
Which is also consistent with other similar type uses.
Mr. Schultz.
Since, I have to apologize, I was not at the meeting where you discussed this. Could you tell me, or refresh my memory of what similar uses are?
Yes. Adult foster care, small group homes.
Are those items not recognized and licensed by the state of Michigan?
Oh, they are, they are recognized and licensed by the state of Michigan.
So this really isn't similar, because sober living facilities are not licensed or recognized by the state of Michigan, correct?
Well, it's, it's similar insofar as that it's a, the residential use is...
It's a residential use, but they are not recognized or licensed by the state of Michigan.
Not, not specifically yet, correct.
Thank you. So the next step would be to...
The next step would be, if the, if the planning commission supports this, is to schedule a public hearing, to get public input on the site.
Is there anyone, any commissioner who does not support this? Let me ask that, yeah, Mr. Schultz. Okay. Okay, number 11 is public comment for items on the current agenda and stating no one else in the audience. We'll move on to planning commission comment, and let's start with Mr. Hudson today.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had one, two items, excellent. I wonder, I'm going to repeat again, I really would like to see us, if you can. I know that you have priorities as it relates to the sign ordinance. You know, you said it was kind of a back burner kind of a thing. I'm really fearful that we're going to get the, the Chrysler, or, yeah, the, 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 uh... Yeah, I don't know, I wanted to be polite.
Mr. Grant.
If we're not, if we're not careful, that's going to happen. We already have it on the, on that one poller there, that one, and, and I, I can just see it happening. I, I think really, if you can, I really would like to see it, boost it up if you can, come back with the revamping of that. I also have concern as it relates to, I know other communities do not allow the, the lighting levels that we were talking about before, and they don't allow it, period.
Allow.
Any of the flashing lights, et cetera, that are going on, with the LEDs and all the rest of the stuff that, that's going on. I'm, I'm just wondering, are we really just, and I know that's part of technology, but just because it's technology, I don't know if we really need to do that. That's another issue in itself that you can really bring up. The other thing I was hoping that I would get sometime, I know that, you know, I've had this for some time, which is actually the punch list item, if I may, or the checklist. And I know it's all-encompassing, and I was just wondering if this shouldn't be spelled out into maybe several categories? If it's just site plan approval, it's PD approval, you know, there are different requirements for each one of these. And I think that is something that we should have also a copy of, so we know whether or not they meet the criteria of all the things that are really required and whether or not we should approve it if they don't. That's my own comment.
Mr. Brett.
I'll piggyback on Tom Stratt's comment about signs. I think we're already behind the eight ball on it, I think we're moving forward faster.
Can I respond? Signage, as you, as I think all of you are aware, with the planning commission, we got input on some, some revisions, proposed revisions to the sign code that was put on the back burner at city management level for a number of reasons. One, we were involved in litigation regarding some signage. Two, there was a new city manager, and three, there were some political things going on and as well as a budget. And there was all kinds of things going on. We have had internal meetings recently, within the last couple of weeks, on the sign ordinance. We're actually looking at updating a number of ordinances, including the sign ordinance. The city manager is aware of the draft that the planning commission has moved forward. I agree with everything you said regarding, you know, the need, what, what you've talked about with regarding changeable, you know, intermittent flashing signage and lighting and all that is taken care of in the draft, the draft ordinance that the planning commission moved forward. And the city manager is aware of, of our desire to, to get that document moved forward. So the timetable, I don't know, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not responsible for determining when things go on the agenda, but, but we'll get there.
I understand the rationale, or at least right now, the intent of the sign being actually controlled by a separate entity, and we're not reviewing the sign as part of the site plan approval. But many communities, that's part of the site plan approval process. And I, I, it bothers me that we're not looking at least at that. I understand that the enforcement end is another issue in itself. But enforcement is another issue in all cases, regardless of what we do, so... But if we can in a study session sometime, I really would hope that we'd be able to start going through that evaluation pretty soon.
Well, actually, it's ready, the planning commission, we've got the draft version that you, we, we went kind of around and around on that. It's ready to be hunted forward.
Wow.
And, and one of the things, one of the, one of the hot button items, Mr. Hudson, you'll recall, is the, the brightness of, of electronic signs, changeable message signs.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Kevin.
Uh, no comments tonight.
I'll agree with everything that was said about signs. How long ago were we in Las Vegas for the conference, like five years ago, six years ago?
It's about where the idea sprung forth.
The other thing we need to look at, if it's not in the language that we put in before, is changeable message signs that are inside the building but visible from the outside, because some of our convenience stores and gas stations are starting to look like fireworks explosions. Because Miller Beer has a flashing sign and Budweiser has a flashing sign, and they have a flashing open sign, and they have a lottery sign, and they're all going off independent of each other. And I think that needs to be controlled also. What's all the basketballs? I would again like to invite Mr. Kishnik to come in and say hello and introduce himself. I realize he's busy, but I, I think we'd all like to meet him.
I, I shared, I shared your, your request with him, and he, he is, he will come in.
And then I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you have any idea what's going on with Birmingham Chrysler Plymouth? Is it going to be demolished? Because they just put a six-foot fence around it this afternoon.
Birmingham, is that, is that Toyota?
15 Mile, next to, next to the Lincoln Mercury dealership, between Lincoln Mercury and Ford.
Yeah, they're doing some renovations to the building, including elimination of a curb cut and reconfiguration of some parking.
As they've torn the entire ceiling out and that's all piled inside the building, and today they put a six-foot fence all the way around it. So I figure there must be something pretty major going on.
Yeah, it's, um, it's actually less, less significant than you think. I can, I can email you, I can email you full plans.
I'm just glad to see something's being done, so it's not going to sit empty. I think I got a pretty good idea what's going to happen to it, but I'll wait and see.
Mr. Shewky.
Uh, yes, I agree with the sign ordinance, that's very important. It sets a tone of the whole downtown area, the, the whole commercial area. And it can either, it can either be a plus or it can be an eyesore. So I think that, that's, it's got a very big potential downside. The quicker we can get at it, the better, because the problem's only going to get worse.
Just wondering if we could get an update from our city attorney.
I, I can tell you that we are still progressing. They're still proceeding with the transit center.
Construction.
The construction, right. The, hopefully, everything will be done by October 1st. That's the, the goal, and we think that they're certainly on track to, to have that going. We did get, we filed a motion for reconsideration of the Court of Appeals decision. And Grand Sacwa filed a motion for immediate effect, which would have transferred the ownership to them if, if the, if the court would have granted their relief. The court, with a two-line opinion, denied both of the motions. And so now it's up to an application for leave to appeal at the Michigan Supreme Court. So that application is due July 26th.
In the meantime, you're still under construction?
The city of Troy still is the owner of the property. The city of Troy, even though the Court of Appeals, you know, had, had a, a different opinion and lost it until there's a final opinion from the Michigan Supreme Court on the order of the appellate period has expired, the city of Troy is still the owner of it.
Thank you.
Kathy? All right. Still my question, so, but I would, do we have one quick follow-up? Do we know, has Grand Sacwa indicated, or do you, when we can know, the 26th, that's the deadline, they have to file an appeal?
We would be, right, we're intending to file an application for leave to appeal.
Okay, and how about that, would they, would they file, can they file an application for, to have a decision?
They will respond to our application, very, very likely. And, you know, another option, too, that's out there is condemnation of, of the site. So, I mean, there are several ways that, you know, if, if we do get an adverse ruling from the Michigan Supreme Court, then there is the option of condemnation as well.
Is that similar to eminent domain?
It is, it's the same thing. It's the same thing.
One follow-up question, would that be applicable for the grant, if we had to go through?
We have a couple of different grants out there, and we are working to secure the ability, because this is, again, unanticipated, but we are, are certainly, there's a dialogue between the FRA and also the FTA to make sure that we could use the grant money to acquire, because we don't, it's not coming out of the, the general fund, the city's general fund. That's very clear, that the city will not be taken out of the general fund to pay for a property.
Are we still in, within our budget?
Oh, absolutely, we're certain, we're under budget and we're, we're, we're on time.
Not like Lincoln, someone with facilities down there. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, this meeting is adjourned very well.
Thank you.